All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Burwick Planning Board. This is a regular meeting for Thursday, January 2, 2020. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the first Planning Board meeting of the year and the first of the new decade. How about that? Planning Board members present tonight, we have regular member Frank Underwood. We also have Sean Winston and Mike LaRue. Absent tonight is the Vice Chair Nicole Fecto and alternate Dave Ross Lyons. We also have our Code Enforcement Officer here and we have our town. We'll talk about this offline, your title that you've been calling yourself, but for, as far as I know, it's Planning Technician/Webmaster/Facebook Administrator/Concert Promoter. James is here.
That's the legal title.
Okay. And two members of the public here. I'd like to open a public comment session. It's open to any resident or property owner in the town of Burwick to come forward and talk about anything that relates to the Planning Board. Feel free to come forward, just state your name and your address if you have any comments that you'd like to make now. You can make them during public comment. We're not, it looks like the applicant is not here this evening. No pressure, you don't need to come forward. If anybody wants to come forward, public comment session's open. Okay, going once, going twice, we'll close the public comment session and we'll move on. We have another public comment session at the end of the meeting. Old business, we have an application here. The applicant was supposed to be here, so we'll give him the benefit of the doubt. Maybe he's running a little bit late, so we can go down to new business if there's no objections to that.
We need to approve the minutes?
Yes, we do, thank you.
It's Mike?
Yeah. See, I didn't, I wasn't, I wasn't at that meeting, so I just blew over the approval of minutes. So next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the Thursday, December 19, 2019 meeting. I will be abstaining because I was not present at this meeting.
I have no comments on minutes.
I didn't see anything.
I'm good.
Okay, so the motion will be for the approval of the minutes.
I'll move that we approve the minutes for the December 19, Friday morning meeting.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, and I'm abstaining from that vote. All right, now we can move on to new business here. Conditional use application, adult-use marijuana storefront, 513 Portland Street, MAP R 72, Lot 5. It's in the RCI zone and the applicant is Trican Alternatives. And James, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, I'll read a little bit of Leejay's memo. He writes, "As you may recall, in October of 2018, the board approved a medical use and food prep facility processing for Trican. In March, they were back before the board seeking medical marijuana storefront. Now Trican is seeking approval to utilize the other portion of the building, formerly a beauty shop, to be used as an adult-use retail store. The adult-use storefront would be segregated by a separate entrance in the main lobby of the building with an operation schedule of seven days a week, open from 7:00 to 7:00 daily, and expanding the operation. The business will go from eight employees to approximately 25 employees. The submission includes a revised architectural plan of the building and internal layout of the facility. The submission also shows an aerial of the facility with proposed employee parking area to the rear of the facility." And then Leejay goes into a bit about the parking and since then, Aaron submitted a bit on the parking plan where Leejay references Article 7, which is the parking standard requirements. And based off the square footage, the required parking spaces is 31 spaces and I believe, Aaron, you'll have, was it 39 spaces on site?
Yeah.
So 26 in the front and then 13 in the back for employees. In the parking plan, Aaron mentions that, well, I'll let you get into like how the shifts will work.
Sure.
So, so there's a host of waivers, I think, based on the fact that they've gone through some of the conditional use with the medical. But Leejay does suggest going, looking at them carefully and kind of, if we find application complete, then set a public hearing, so it might air it up.
All right, come on up, just state your name for the record and our viewers at home. We're a very highly rated program here on Thursday nights.
Yeah, I'm sure. I'm Aaron Barth, President of Trican Alternatives at 513 Portland Street in Burwick. As James was stating about the parking, I'll just kind of reiterate that, that our anticipation of employees right now, we have a total of eight employees, that shifts out. So that's a total of our employees, however, they're not all working in the storefront at the same time. We split days because we're running 12-hour shifts. So three, we have three days and three days that the employees are swapping back and forth. So we would probably do the exact same thing in the adult-use side, even though our anticipation is to increase the number of employees, that would be, again, total encompassing the building on both adult-use and medical side. We would have probably about a total, max total, obviously not initially, but max total of five employees in the adult-use side at one time. And then we're at about four, four on the medical side, so a total of nine.
Then you would double up the cars while they're doing the shift change, right?
So, no, the shift change, no, the shift change is based on the days, so they only work three days. Even though we have a lot of employees, they're not all working at the same time. So we have, they work three days.
At 12 hours?
That's right.
Oh, okay. So you're not going to have, you're not going to have a shift change during the day?
No shift change during the day, no. There is no shift change during the day. They work straight through.
They're assigned there there for 12 hours.
They're assigned certain days, but, you know, we have a total of, you know, a lot of employees, so.
Looking at that employee parking lot, is that asphalt or is that, what is that?
Yeah, that's asphalt.
It is? All right, it just didn't, it didn't look like that. Are you going to?
One, one thing that, you know, as far as the number of parking spaces, if we needed to increase the number of spaces, one idea or proposal I had was, which I would have to find out, the setbacks, is to build a retaining wall along Old Route 4 and extend the parking lot out towards Old Route 4. So that way I had parking on the front of the building and then adjacent.
How many, how many spots are you off by? Three?
He has, he has more than enough.
No, I have, I have plenty of spots.
More than enough to meet our demands.
So when you say this calculates out to 31 spaces, is that based on the square footage of the total building that has both uses in it? Or is that just the square footage associated with the adult retail store?
No, it was associated with both the medical, the adult use, and the office space.
So it calculates out to 31 for all the uses, if we approve this, that will be there? And then, but he's got room for 39, did you say that?
Right, so keep in mind, I have a chef that needs to park and, you know, you know, I have some other people in the basement that we lock up during the day. In the basement, it's a joke.
But the, the parking counts and the parking numbers, that's, takes consideration for customers and employees, so it's every, it's all covered, okay?
Correct, that's right. So the intention is to have all employees park in the rear and then all the upper lot inside. That's all for customers. And in that lot, there are two handicap spots. However, we're probably going to relocate those handicap spots, but keep two of them as handicap.
Does that, does that number need to increase or is that enough for that?
I don't, I don't know what the required handicap.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the ADA requirements are.
So there's currently, there's currently two handicap spots. We're not increasing or decreasing the number of spots. So unless we revamped the parking lot.
Yeah, because I know there's a, like, I don't know if it's a ratio or a certain number that, out of whatever you have, I know it's a certain number has to be accessible.
So two, two separate entrances for the medical and for the retail?
So it's like, there's a picture of it. So it's a, it's like a Cape Cod, right? Center Cape entrance, walk into the foyer. Inside that foyer, you have a, an adult-use side on your left and a medical side on your right. Both doors go into.
And the handicap are right there at the door?
And there would be a handicap ramp right there.
That's something Jennifer, you could just check on to see if there is a separate look, look see into the number of handicap you may need?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
I will.
And then there are two flanking doors on the front of the building, the two far flanking doors. Those would be exit doors. So entrance door in the center, exit doors on the flanking side. So it's one way in, one way out.
Any other questions? I'm, I'm still tied up a little bit or hung up a little bit on whether or not Maine has issued the final regulations for the retail.
So they have, they have, we've already applied for the.
Those have been, Mike, have they been issued? They were issued in a draft.
They are issuing them.
They are or have been?
They, they have been. It's just they're still changing stuff as it's coming, though.
Well, the only reason I bring it up is I watched what they did in Massachusetts and when they were changing them in the 11th hour, they turned around and they put some of those requirements back on the individual municipalities to deal with whatever those particulars might have been. And I've been kind of hung up on the fact that I wasn't going to support anything until the regulations were signed and inked and issued. So I will not support, I did it with the other one that was in here. I will not support any action on this unless those regulations have been. And I understand it's, I understand it's to apply and get placement and get into the loop and the system, but I'm hung up on the fact that the regulations have not been formally.
Actually, they have been formally set forth.
Yeah.
No, that, that's incorrect.
So when you're saying they're still tweaking them, though, what's that mean?
So, so as of recently, the only change that there has been is that the state had issued a contract with a company, not, was it BioTrack?
Yep.
It was BioTrack, which is a seed-to-sale tracking system. And that contract, I guess, amicably got dissolved and the state has decided to go with another company that they are signing contracts with, which is called Matrix. And Matrix is actually one of the largest seed-to-sale tracking systems. They're using it in almost all states. I, I don't know what happened with BioTrack, not really our thing. We were in the process of starting to launch BioTrack, but then literally the day we were getting a hold of the state, we were informed that the state had dissolved that contract and is now under new contract with a new seed-to-sale tracking, which is called Matrix.
None of the, none of the laws or anything, that has to, if anything's like that's changed, it's got to go to the legislature.
So we've, we've recently reached out to OMP and OMP indicated to us that, that this change is not going to impact the launch of.
You know, OMP is Office of Marijuana.
Policy. Yeah, I mean, they're, they're the go-to. I mean, they're it.
No, I read somewhere over the last couple of days, there are 40 applications in front of the state at this juncture?
Uh, no, there's probably more than that.
Way more than that?
Probably a couple hundred.
That was the first couple of weeks.
Forty came in in the first couple of weeks.
There's probably at least 200. I have no, I can't even guess.
How many licenses has the state issued?
None.
Okay.
Yeah, they're still in the process of going over. I mean, there's a lot to go over in these applications because you have the retail store applications, then you have the cultivation store applications. At this juncture, we're just applying for the retail store applications. Our intent is to purchase all products for the adult-use side, but continue cultivating for our medical side. And the only reason we're doing that is because right now North Burwick opted out for the adult-use cultivation, so.
Don't get me wrong, I'm also asking questions because you're, you're well-versed in the subject. We're on a learning curve, especially this end of the table, just so that you know.
I'm glad I have a little support too.
You presented very well and as we, we are on Burwick Community TV and I think the fact that some of these things are happening at the, at the state level, it's important that if you can bring us up to speed on what's, what that is evolving, that's, that's a thankful for that.
We're very involved, you know, we're, we're touching base with OMP on a weekly basis, if not a couple times a week, just to make sure that we're on track, we're doing the right things. We don't want to be, we actually want to be ahead of the curve as far as utilizing the seed-to-sale tracking, our POS systems, and make sure that we're ready to go when the adult-use licensing comes out. We don't want to be, I think there is going to be some, a, a learning curve with some of these companies and we want to be ahead of that learning curve before the licensing is even really awarded, so.
Will we be taking any action on this tonight?
We can.
Application, application complete would be the first step.
Would be the first step, just to recognize that it is complete. Because I, I'm sitting in for a board member that has been set aside for a while. I'm taking his spot for the end of his term and I conversed with him on a lot of these issues and this is one that has been right in Paul's wheelhouse all along. And so if we're not taking anything other than voting for a complete application, give me a chance to catch up to my little buddy.
Well, it also, and then we would also be scheduling a public hearing and a site walk if one was, was needed, but we'd also have to act on, we'd have to look at the waivers as well this evening.
Can we, can we talk about handicap accessible parking real quick? So you guys just know what the law requires? So it says that from 26 to 50 parking spots, you, you need two, but one has to be handicap van accessible. Is yours?
Right now, the existing one is.
Okay.
We do have one handicap van accessible and the intention is to have the whole center entrance walkway like marked off and have handicap on both sides. You know what I'm saying? So, so that way it would be super wide spaces.
How you do it is really not up to me. I can only tell you what the law states. So it's two, it's two per, from 26 to 50 parking spots, it's two, but one has to be handicap van accessible.
So that's a space and a half approximately?
Pretty much.
Yeah.
Yep.
Sean, anything?
This is really, not really a question, but an observation, something, I don't know if maybe, I don't know if you've thought about this or might want to think about this. Looking at the two exit doors, possibility for someone to be exiting and for someone to grab that door?
So I've already thought about that. So I want to make sure that, you know, I.
I know, like, the entrance is, looks good with, it's sort of an airlock type situation, but I was looking at the two exit doors.
Yeah, I'm going to be talking to the architects about that, just to, just to spec out those doors. I want to make sure that nobody can actually enter through those two exit doors. They can only go through that one center entrance and, and have the ability for egress, three different egresses on the front of that building, just in case of whatever.
Yeah, and I want, right now, you've got one side, probably not as many people, but you may get more people. Somebody holds that door open for somebody else without knowing what they're doing and...
Well, that's another thing too, is I redesigned the whole front, that, that center entrance. We're doing a, right now, it's a single door and we're doing a double door entrance.
That's all I have. Mike?
So you, for the adult use, you're not going to be cultivating, it's just going to be a package sale, so there's only going to be one real processing room and that's going to be for, like bud processing room for medicinal?
Uh, what do you mean by processing?
Just trimming and having things separate?
So everything, all processing happens in North Burwick.
Okay.
And then gets, and then gets.
So it's just the, the edibles and stuff that gets me?
Right, yeah, the kitchen, yeah, all that.
Okay.
So we're intending on setting up packing is really what we need upstairs in the office.
Okay.
We want to have a packing.
So there are deliveries then that come from North Burwick to, to this facility?
Currently, yes.
Is it small panel trucks, is it?
It's my pile wagon.
Or snow vehicles?
Yeah, it's just me.
Okay, but I'm, there's no large trucks or any impacts from a delivery service?
No, I mean, we do get deliveries. We, you know, we have a linen service come and it's, it's what, a big panel truck?
You don't have tractor-trailers?
It's not like Cumberland Firearms where they back the truck across the road and block it?
No, no, no. I mean, I've had tractor-trailer trucks stop and park and come in and see if they can buy medicine, but that's about it. They do that on the road.
All right, so tonight we're looking at two things, or a couple, three things actually, whether or not the application's complete, then we're going to vote on the waivers and then we can set a public hearing and also then discuss if we want to have a site walk again at this facility.
The reason, just on the waivers, there, Mr. Chairman, these are checked because these were all submitted as part of the first package?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
The formality of the granting waivers still?
Absolutely, yeah, nothing's changed. There's no new construction or anything like that, so, you know, it's just all, you've already submitted these.
So, well, we submitted remodel, so we are intending on remodeling the building as far as new construction goes, so.
Yeah, you're just not adding a foot, square footage.
Footprint stays the same.
Footprint stays the same.
You're putting a facade on it and a.
A little.
You're not expanding, you're not expanding the footprint.
I have two things for, for waiver-wise. We want to talk about the septic system. Take a look, look at that because the septic system on file is for 1985, 12 office employees. Historically, the building was used for offices, residential, so think on the whole, you're still less than what it's historically been used for, but.
Yeah.
Who, so there's an HHE 200 form in the file. Is the soils evaluator that did that still around? Is he still?
Can look, I can look, we can look into.
Find out and maybe get, get him to speak to the issue on the fact that there's going to be a little more use there and whether or not there's.
So I'll also speak with the architects in regards to that. I'm sure that they're, they're doing all that as well.
And then the low-impact design thing, are you doing any landscaping? I think I may have asked you this, you're trying to do any landscaping or, you like rain gardens?
So, I mean, we're just going to kind of redo what's already there.
But in terms of, are you putting in new windows for the building?
We are putting in new windows.
So I mean, I would assume with the new facades in the building, it's, you're increasing the R-value of the.
I hope so, because it's pretty bad right now.
This isn't the building complex where Salmon Falls and?
Across the street.
Okay, you're not in that shared well group.
I am.
Oh, you are in that shared well group.
Yep.
And there's no, and there is no additional impact, you know, as far as, you know, what I've already been approved for, there's no change. We're not increasing water usage or, or anything like that.
I mean, I don't think I sat on the board when that.
I remember that was a big discussion.
Flared up, but has any resolution been brought about by all the people out there as to if the well does have a problem, how it's going to be remedied?
Well, if the well had a problem, I'd just dig a new well.
Well, but I mean, but you had three people using one well? Was that the, is that the history of the site?
Yeah, but it's a pretty, you know, long-lasting well. It's, it's been operational for a number of years with no impact.
There's not an operate, there's not a, an agreement between the users on maintaining it and paying for it and putting money to the site?
There is not.
So it's a.
And the way that we, and the way that Leejay explained this, there's adequate water there now and if there isn't, then that's their problem. It becomes their problem and then it becomes a civil issue.
Between them?
Between, between the three property owners.
You did bring up a good point. You're, you're replacing a hair salon, which theoretically you'd be using less, but still I think it's, with the employees, it's still just good due diligence to look into the subject.
Yeah.
Capacity.
No, I agree, I agree.
I mean, the only question usually happens is when someone turns the tap and nothing comes out, they're going to call, who, the town?
They're going to call us, James and I, yeah.
They're going to call code.
So it would be a civil issue, though, so if you guys.
What do you mean, if?
If the well went dry.
I'm calling Salmon Falls.
Right, and you guys are going to figure it out amongst each other. So it would be a civil issue, there's nothing that we can do about it.
Right.
Really, it's a private well.
Right, he just wants you to understand that going forward.
Yeah, Jennifer doesn't need a call, Tom Edner doesn't need a call, three selectmen don't, well, Mark.
Okay, great.
Call Mark, you can call Mark.
Call Mark, yeah.
Yeah, he's, he's the, the other side.
Okay, I got up, I went in the weeds on that one.
But you know what, though? Frank's right, though. I do think that when you talk to your engineer, you should look into making sure that your septic is suitable for what you're trying to do. I'm sure it is, but just make sure. I would cross that T for sure.
Yeah, I'll touch base.
Yep.
All right, we're, excuse me, are we ready to take action on the application completeness?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we just accept the application as complete. That allows us now to go forward to a public site visit and a public hearing. I will make that motion, but I do want a side to say, every time you come in here, if you could give us a 101 update on where things are happening at the state level, including whether or not any licenses have been issued.
Absolutely.
You're more in tune in the loop than we are, but any helpful information along that line would go a long way in satisfying at least me.
More than happy to help.
All right, would you, would you like to make that motion now?
Yeah, make the motion that we, we call the application complete for, what's the official name? Tricam Alternatives LLC.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion on application completeness? All in favor? Okay. Next, let's take a look at the waivers here. We'll vote on each individual waiver. So the first waiver that is requested here, external plumbing permit or permission letter to enter municipal water sewer lines, there is no municipal water sewer lines out there or onsite soil investigation report by licensed site evaluator, which you already provided initially back, what was it, two years ago? So that, he's requesting a waiver on that because there's already one on file with the town. So we'll just do, we're going to, we'll make motions for each of these.
Okay, I'll move, we accept the waiver for the external plumbing permit or permission letter.
Okay.
Second.
Second, and then do we have any further discussion, all in favor? Okay. Next is a written statement documenting proposed low impact design for the site to reduce stormwater volumes, LID includes but is not limited to green roofs, rain gardens, tree wells, infiltration basins, impermeable pavement. We made you do that the last time, James also made some discussions, we can either continue to go ahead with this waiver request, or you can just put something on your final plans that just says, that just says you're going to increase the R value. Maybe add a few shrubs.
Thonius? What would you like? Sure, yeah, we could do that.
With the remodel, you're going to be increasing the R value of the building, so that's your low impact design, you're not going to be increasing impervious surfaces or anything like that, so. All right, then we could skip that waiver there.
Okay, great.
Then next is materials to satisfy section 981, or 98I1A through S as they apply to conditionally use review. Now I'm going to have to look those up, I don't remember what those are.
I don't know those, I'll cut my head.
And. James, what are those?
It's supplemental information that isn't directly covered by the other application.
Do you know what page that is on? Am I even going in the right direction?
Section nine.
Uh, let's see. Nine, eight, oh, here we go, nine, eight. A description of proposed uses to be on, a description of the proposed uses to be located on the site, including quantity and type of building construction, if any, total floor and ground coverage of each proposed building and structure, and percentage of lot cover by each building or structure, method of solid waste disposal, all these things that have been. Previously in here before, oh, did you get in touch with the police chief? Let him know with a proposed change?
No, I mean, as far as the last interaction with the police chief, you know, you mean as far as the adult use goes?
Yeah, just letting him know that, hey, not only are we going to have the medical here, but we're also going to have this here.
No.
All right.
I mean, the last, the last interaction that was, you know, the feedback that I got from them is, it's not our responsibility to. Address their security plan.
No, it's just an FYI.
Sure.
Could you just draft a letter to chief, to the chief town and just.
I can do that.
It could be one paragraph long and then just CC James on it, it could even be in an email and just say, I'm currently going before the planning board, and these are the changes that I'm going to make, just an FYI for you and your guys to know.
Did we ever get the one for the greenery across the way here? So that, so we, the chief did finally send that letter in, Jerry Galoc or whoever sent it in, so we do have that type of a letter, that was on the security system as well, if I believe.
Yeah, but the letter we got from him, so he's not so far off, the letter we got from him about on the Bow Street building over here, pretty much said exactly what he's saying.
Okay.
So it just basically says, you have a security system, you're on your own.
Yep.
Yep.
So that's all we're looking for.
Just give them the opportunity to comment with further recommendations.
Exactly.
And it gives the officers a heads up that you're trying to use and it's going to be a little bit different, so it is a good idea.
Yeah, we're pretty in touch with the police department.
Lovely.
They know us pretty well.
All right, so this will be a motion here for materials, I'll make a motion to waive materials to satisfy section 98L1A through S as they apply to conditionally use review.
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion, all in favor? All right, next is site plan approval requirements, once again.
And those aren't applicable because it's not a site plan review, Aaron just checked those off.
Thank you, you're right, and you already submitted those anyways, a long time, a while ago, so, so you're just looking at those, that would be two waivers then? Because the third one, we're not, you're just going to put something on the plans about the low impact design. Would we like to have, Frank, I know you probably want to have a site walk out there because you haven't been out there.
I haven't been out there at all, you know.
So our next meeting is going to be on the 16th of January. Do you want to go out there, say at 4:30?
What time's the sunset, 4:22 now, what was it, today?
Yeah, give it two weeks, about 4:50.
Yeah. Let's say, well, I can go anytime, I mean, I can.
You want to say Saturday morning?
Well, Saturday at seven.
I like the Saturday, too.
Eight.
I live there now, so you can go whenever.
Well, they're open at seven, right?
Most people that.
Sixteenth?
Huh?
Sixteenth?
Yeah.
I can do, I could do 4:30.
Okay.
I can do 4:30.
I can do 4:30 on the sixteenth. All right, does that work for you?
I'll make it work.
And then we want to have a public hearing that evening?
Sixteenth?
On the sixteenth, yeah, two Thursdays from now, and then can we notice a public hearing for the sixteenth at 6:30?
Yep.
All right. See you in a couple Thursdays.
Great. Site visit. Perfect.
All right, that's it.
Okay, thanks guys.
And how's the last name spelled, Aaron?
B-A-R-T-H.
Can I have you explain something real quick?
Sure.
What do you, what is hap, what happened here?
I don't know.
Typo.
Are you, are you judging my?
No, 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 you should see my typos.
James has no reason, no, no.
James is king of the typos.
No orders.
Never said I could spell, okay?
You spelled it exactly how it sounds, that's fine.
I'm fanatic.
Yeah.
All right, so next on the agenda in new business, we're going to discuss the land use ordinance, and I guess we can also pull in this village overlay and.
Perfect timing.
CI district expansion request, we can also talk about it in there, but one of the things I just wanted to mention, and maybe, this is something that we should talk to Steve, the town manager, and also get the board of selectmen involved, but. We know how dangerous Route 4 is, Portland Street, and it's only going to get worse, and I think the DOT, the state needs to do something, they need to put in turning lanes there. I know specifically like the turn off of Route 4 onto Blackberry Hill. When I'm, I slow down and I get all the way into the shoulder and then turn in there, but it's like, and then cars are like right behind, I mean, I know what happens to a lot of other people too, all over the place, and there's more and more businesses that are moving out there. We need to have turning lanes out there.
It really should be a coalition between the town and then lean on business owners to advocate for.
We need to have like, we should have like a public hearing, we should, we should first engage, engage the state, the DOT, and then see if they would be willing to have a public hearing here in town with business owners and residents, and look at some key areas. I know Blackberry Hill Road is one of them, for instance. It's, you know, maybe getting rid of some of the shoulder length and then putting a turning lane in the middle.
Center lane, yeah. Well, there's a long history of the discussion about that whole Route 4 corridor accidents and everything that go along with it.
Oh, I know, I know, and this is like, I remember a couple summers ago.
And I think that your point is well taken, and if we could get maybe even a DOT person down here at some point in time, talk to them about it.
I mean, just even slowing cars down, I think that if you, I'm not a traffic expert, but I mean, like all these, Blackberry Hill again, it's just if you put in some raised islands or bollards or something, just to slow cars down, because I was out there this weekend a couple times and it just reminded me, so.
I've got, I've actually, now you may, I have bollards where we kind of did our experience with Sullivan Street.
I'm telling you, you guys are going to be out there putting bollards out on Route 4.
Well, I can work with.
Tell you what, they're not, they're not going to last, they can tell you that, so he's going to see them and just.
Yeah.
They're, yeah, they're, well, they bounce right back, they.
Slalom course.
Attack the car more than it does them, they bounce right.
But something, you know, if you take a drive down Route 4 through the Lee Roundabout and you go out into Northwood, that's a 55 mile an hour road, and, you know, I know they have some accidents out there, but they've got some different types of traffic things, but I don't want to get too far off, but I think it's just something that we should probably look at like soon. All right, so looking at your land use ordinance amendments here, James?
Yeah, I can go through every, everything, so this is the marijuana section, and I think this is one of the last significant times of touching this ordinance is the intent behind this specific change, and. Just, we've been separating out the marijuana changes to everything else, and we'll get into everything else next, next meeting. So I'll just go through every, every change, the first one is simply a simplifying medical marijuana cooperative and medical marijuana production facilities. You can just strike out what I have struck out and just say marijuana production facilities. The next change there is crossing Route 4, there is no Route 4 in R3, so it's extra. I am crossing out dispensaries, because dispensaries is kind of a relic of the past, they're storefronts now, you're not going to have dispense. Right, you're going to have dispensaries, you're going to have storefronts. The next change, there's a little symbol here, the plus symbol, and that refers to.
But can you go back to that sentence, James, that we have crossed out dispensaries?
Yep.
I think you should rearrange that so it's a little more clear that it's adult use and, adult use and medical marijuana production facilities and storefronts. Because the way it's got, you've kind of got adult use and medical separated in that sentence.
So it says adult use and marijuana production.
So you've got adult use and marijuana production facilities and medical marijuana storefronts, like they're two separate things, but you all, you want to include an adult use storefront as well. I don't think that sentence really specifies.
Oh, right, yeah.
The way it's written.
Adult use and medical marijuana storefronts and.
Production.
Right, right, adult use storefront should be in there too, I got you. If you're on the same site, you're, it's not another, is that what you're?
Well, dispensaries still exist in the state.
They do, and you could still create a dispensary.
I would not strike dispensaries.
Okay.
Is that more of a, associated with medical than adult use, or?
Not anymore.
No.
Difference is, they have different laws, you know, or abilities.
Yeah.
They can cultivate unlimited amounts, it's just, they just have different regulations than storefronts, so, but they're not, they're not eliminated from the state, they still exist. And they could come in onto Route 4 very easily.
What was your thought process behind striking it, James?
I thought dispensaries were given a certain number and that those storefronts.
It was at first.
It was, there's more available.
Yeah, there's more slots available, it's just more, it's easier to go for a storefront than it is for a dispensary.
I can give you an example, I could buy out a dispensary.
Yep.
Right, I could buy a dispensary and then convert that dispensary to a trican and then, and then apply to open a dispensary or, or change my storefront to a dispensary.
I think, I think if you bought out a dispensary, within our definition, you'd still be a storefront, but I'll leave it in there.
Just leave it in there. Yeah, it'd be easier to leave it in.
If it's still used in the state or if it's, and it's a separate thing like Aaron said, I think we should keep it in there.
Yeah, they're combined into one definition, leave it language in there, that's, that's fine. I'm just trying, my, my whole goal behind like, is trying to get our ordinance simplified, we have a lot of fat in there, so that is an opportunity for that. Okay.
He also wants pictures, I'll add that in.
Picture book, more pictures is better, so storefronts cannot be in a thousand feet of, and there's a notation here, so there were production facilities that were permitted as agriculture before we had. Marijuana defined, there's three of them in town. This reduces the setback, so it allows them, they're already growing marijuana there anyways, this allows them to come in front of the planning board and get a conditionally use approval and improve their building.
My concern would be that they may want to expand.
But they wouldn't be required to be a thousand foot setback?
It just reduces the setback to the, the state minimum.
We discussed reducing our minimum anyway to the state minimum.
But this, so this just does it, so it reduces the minimum for those who are already growing marijuana anyways, but doesn't reduce it wholesale. You know, it doesn't reduce.
Well, that's, and I understand that, but if they have an existing facility, like I said, what if they want to expand that, are they still going to be allowed to expand, now they're doing.
Right, they're just doing medical now and then they.
Now they're constructing something new, maybe, maybe they want adult use there as well.
You could probably just say they can't, they can't expand, it has to be within.
Didn't we do this with David, what's his name, up on School Street?
Pretty much, that's the same, similar idea, is that they're already in non-conforming, it's a way to get them into.
David Springer, David Springer.
Yeah, it's a way to get them to the planning board and.
Because he wanted to expand.
Yep. Yep.
Does this prevent somebody from, if the marijuana facility existing, can somebody come in and put a childcare center in 200 feet away from it?
Yes.
After the fact?
Yeah.
You can't locate a new marijuana thing close to something that exists, but a change in use after is.
Yeah, so daycare can come in, I checked that one out.
They would be knowingly entering that position, knowing that there's a store, cultivation facility.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think that's my only question is, does the language say something about they can't construct, you know, they can't do any new construction, they can only maintain what they have?
I think we can, yeah, just within their building.
Yeah.
There's a difference between adult use and medical though, so.
Yeah.
So the definition needs to be defined because medical, you're limited, adult use has the ability.
They're defined, they're both defined.
They have the ability to, to.
Do have ma.
So like 420, right?
Yep.
They wouldn't be able to expand that.
Correct.
Not the, not the footprint, but they'd be able to.
Utilize the building.
Planning board and get a conditionally use application for.
If you talk, you got to use a microphone. Yeah. Sorry.
You're going to get in trouble.
On the second page, 8.25.5. B, this just reads.
Wait a minute, James, you skipped over odor control.
That's, again, that's a dispensary storefront thing, we'll keep it.
Can we make a note on odor control while we're talking about it? Can we just say that we're on it, so for the people at home that have a facility or they're growing, just to let you know odor control is becoming an issue and we're going to be taking care of it, so, that's all.
Yeah, to go along with that, coming June, instituting licensing, so it'll be yearly licenses, and if you're not keeping up with odor control, I mean, there's certain measures that the select board will have to make sure that, you got to show that you've replaced your carbon filtration or, I mean, add, I'm not entirely sure of the laws on.
Good luck.
Licensing, but at least you have once every year, you have, it's a public hearing to get your license.
Are there fines?
I, I think you could risk not having your license renewed, I'm not sure, I'm not that up to date with how the licensing works, but the general idea is.
There's no good way to measure odor.
Well, I think.
I know it's written down, I know there's a standard, but it's very difficult, one person's nose is different than the other, they can make a case for it.
It should all just depend on your neighbors, really.
I'll use an example, because we've had complaints at our cultivation facility in North Berwick, however, we're doing everything absolutely positive, possible. We do a negative pressure setup where air is being drawn into the building and carbon scrubbed going out, but there's still some residual odor that is there, so there's got to be, you know, even at our store here in Berwick. I approached my store outside and I can smell it, however, there's, the closest residence is pretty far away from us, so is there some type of, you know, a distance that there's going to be that odor control? You know, based on the location of the building?
Yeah, wasn't it written at the property line?
Right now, it's property line, it's at the property line.
So the odor can't exceed the property line?
Correct.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Yep. That's how it says right now.
Get a nice big piece of property and put your building right in the middle. All right, what do you got next, James?
On the security plan, so it now reads, the third police chief or designee, instead of saying that the security measures are acceptable and also consistent with state requirements, that the department has reviewed the measures and if they have any recommendations. So that just goes back to the back and forth dialogue we've had where.
Like we just did tonight.
Yeah, just they have the opportunity to review, right? The next one, the cultivation thing, striking this out allows the facilities to vertically integrate, which means growing it onsite and selling it onsite. I don't see any reason to restrict that. I think it's probably more secure. It amplifies the property values, which is the most thing I'm keyed in on. You've growing and selling on the same site. Property's worth more. I think that's the big, I mean, that's, and I just, I don't see any, the, the way that this reads is it's limiting.
The cultivation.
It's limiting vertical integration. I don't, I don't see a real good reason to do that.
Are they two separate permits or one permit?
They are two separate permits. Two separate, and they'll be two separate licensing. So Aaron's property will be three licenses.
Great. I'm not cultivating.
Well, I mean, you're processing.
Okay.
So, yeah, I see what this is. So if you have, if you're cultivating and you also have a storefront.
Oh, no, please, where?
If you, if you have cultivating and a storefront, you can't, you, you have to have like a thousand square feet, a thousand square feet. You can't have like a little 300 square foot store and 1,700 square feet of growing. And it doesn't make, that makes, that makes sense.
Yeah. Well, with medical, the, the state has capped the square footage you can have for growing space, for flowering, growing space. And that's also included vertical. You can only have one that they count if you have it separated, so.
I mean, that makes sense. I mean, if I think about it in terms of like a plant greenhouse, you know, it'd be like, your store has to be.
Yeah, you want 80/20.
The same size, yeah, if even that.
You go to like Wentworth greenhouses, you know, they'd have to have like two full greenhouses just for cash registers. So that makes sense. Okay.
Then the last page, again, forget the bottom part, but the part that I am suggesting is we.
Yes.
Basically, start, we start capping, starting June 2020. Everyone that's in, they're in. If anyone else wants to come in, they, they have to wait or, you know, buy the property from another facility. And the number that's on there is the number of places that have been permitted or the number of establishments that I think will be in before June 2020 anyway.
Yes.
I've been very busy almost every day talking about this plan.
I was thinking, I, I was glad when I pulled up our packet and I saw this in there because I was thinking about this the other day too.
I think, so I think, I think in terms of marijuana, I think we've learned a lot and there's no way to know the sequencing of how things come in. At some point, marijuana could have been a thing that jumpstarted, that the downtown would have required an ordinance amendment. I think, I think we're, we're good with having one medical storefront. But in terms of, I think, once you start weighing the costs and the benefits, there's definitely cost, you know, including affecting neighborhoods, which is, it's, it is, it is too bad that some neighbors don't want that use next to their property. In terms of Route four, in terms of property values, I mean, we're talking millions of dollars of, of property taxes on Route four. And hopefully, it's, we won't know the true costs until down the road. But I don't, I think we, we've maximized, maximized our benefit in terms of this use. So it makes sense to just cap it, see where we're at, year and a half, two years from now, and then we can address it if.
I think, I like the one down, you know, in the, in the village overlay. Route nine, I would, I think, I know the one that's, that's the Springer property, but I would even think that two out there would be possibly, we're getting, we're getting way off topic here. So unless you have something that you can say in 30 seconds.
Is the downtown, is that an adult use?
No.
And it will never be at this point, at this point.
As long as, as long as.
Sure.
I, I could see a second one being out on Route nine in the R three.
Yeah.
But for right now, one is fine. But I could definitely see somebody out there wanting to, there's, there's some industry out there, industrial drive back out there.
Yep, and he's actually called me, not industrial, commercial drive.
Commercial drive.
And I think, for me, for you guys, I think it's, I know I need a, a break, and I think it just would be beneficial to see where we're at and, you know, wait. I, I think it's a year, but maybe, maybe it's the next cycle and.
All right, I'm good, I'm good with that, yeah. I mean, that would be the only change that I could see to make, but I know Sean's happy with one. But nobody's come forward yet, so. All right, that looks good. And then we have the request of Mr., is it Cotton?
Yes, sir.
Sir, if you want to step up to the podium and just.
Yes, sir, Dana Cotton. I live at 20 Rochester Street in Berwick.
So I was surprised to see, I tried, I looked up your, your place on Google Maps. Are you one lot outside of the RC, out of the CI district, out of the village overlay?
I'm just, I'm just the one lot, yes.
So you're one lot, you're just.
Sitting there, yeah. Yeah, I just, it could kind of go, oh, you probably know, it kind of goes down, then it shoots off to the left there. If you're going up the street on the right.
It's that long driveway that goes in?
Yes, yes.
That long one in the building.
Yeah, yeah, just, just up, so it'd be the town hall, and let's see, there's Jimmy Jones, the Gormans, and then me on Rochester Street.
So your next, so the next door neighbor to you is in the CI, the village overlay?
Uh, yeah, I believe they are, yes.
Both CI and village overlay.
Right, right.
But the Brackett and Shaw property is not in it, in that one of your butters?
Uh, no, Brackett and Shaw would be.
Further back the other way.
Oh, he's down, yeah, he's down around the quarter off.
This is Rochester Street.
This is Rochester Street.
Are you right next to the boxing place?
Okay.
Exactly, right next to, to the jazz boxing.
So if you're looking at jazz boxing, you're over here? Because he's in the village, right?
I believe he is, yeah. If you drive up Rochester Street, it'd be me and then jazz boxing on the right.
Oh, okay. Then he's not in the, then he's not in the, the village overlay.
Yeah, and I just know it ends. He's just outside. So he's a budding, so.
He can opt in.
Did you have a chance to opt in when we did this like three years ago?
No, I didn't. I, I missed out on that. No, I didn't, I didn't do that. No, no.
Okay.
My bad on that.
But what does it actually take, this request that he's making, us to approve his request subject to the town adopting?
And a public hearing.
Public hearing, and then we do have to adopt the map modification at town meeting?
Close the town vote, yeah.
And it's got to go to all the butters too, and they have to be afforded the opportunity.
Yeah, I understand that. Yes, sir. Yeah, I mean, I, I lived in here since the mid eighties. Nice, comfortable little town. I come from North Conway originally and moved over here from Dover and glad I raised the kids in a nice little rural community here. Got one left and, and you're probably looking to buy a house probably sometime this next year, this year, it's already here. And just looking to maybe, I'm not looking to do anything specific with it. I'm just looking to maybe upgrade the property for future potential down the road. For somebody, maybe an option down there for it. So that's basically where I'm at, whether you're not, you're not going to be doing anything with it as far as land goes, as long as I'm there. So.
I think that we should do a separate public hearing and notice for this request.
Yep, yep. I, I think I have to anyways.
I think you have to, yeah. We can't lump this into the land use changes.
Right, because it's a separate.
But let me just ask, if you're going to go in there and tweak the map, do you know of anybody else that's on the periphery of the whole district?
I know, if we're touched again, I, I can send out a, a letter to say if you want in.
That was a good time.
Because we were also looking at School Street. That was, that was a potential, because that, that came a little bit further out to Logan this time around.
Does the Knights of Pythias building behind the Blue Side building, are they in the district already?
I think they're, I think they're just outside, I, I, off the top of my head, I want to say they're outside the village overlay district, but somehow still in CI. Because the CI is different, different shape than the village overlay district.
But that's a building, could they, are they a budding? Could they adopt that property in if they wanted to?
They're almost behind the Blue Side building, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the Blue Side building's in it.
I mean, it might be worth finding out what they're thinking. I mean, I think their membership is down to two.
Right. Yeah, I just say, just like your reasoning, it increases the options.
Potential down the road, yeah. And Tommy Belanger, what's, what's his, Belanger's auto sales across the street from me? What is his designation? He must be.
He's in the village.
He's in the overlay.
I know it's Shoreland.
It's in the village.
Yeah, yep. Yep, I think it's, is it the village overlay district and Shoreland Commercial Industrial?
Yeah, I think the line pretty much goes, kind of goes through my, through my, through my property. Maybe the, the overlay district goes, didn't they go past, right through the middle of it or part of it originally?
I looked it up tonight when I, when I got home from work and I looked at, and it's, it's kind of does one of these things.
Yeah, yeah.
Behind Eleanor's Way and, yeah. Got to update that.
Did it follow lot lines when, when you did it?
Yeah, it was, it was pretty much identical to the urban overlay district. And we renamed it and then added the Escherbrook School, I think it was. And then we also added the Sawmill Hill.
And we also added.
Church.
Part of School Street down to Logan Street.
Yes. Yep, subsequently, subsequently.
And I think now that the prime looks like it's taking off over there, it would be good, be good to maybe, could meet up with that opportunity with, with them over there, you know, down the road. So.
How much time do you need to get the word out? Do you want to maybe do a public hearing on this next month?
Oh, yeah. So public hearing, I think it's February 20th is when we can have a public hearing for.
I mean, just saying enough time for you to get the word out to some other potential people who may.
Yep, yep.
So what if, instead of doing a public hearing for this on the 16th, what if we go to?
February 20th.
No, 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 the first meeting of, because we have to have a separate public hearing for this.
Yeah, we could, we could do it the same day, just separately noticed.
Or we could do, we could do a public hearing for this particular thing on the 6th.
Okay.
Can we do that?
That's February.
February 6th.
Yeah.
February 6th. That way it gives you, that gives you four, one, two, three weeks.
Yep.
Just make some phone calls.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I wouldn't cut ourselves short on time. I, I like that idea.
Okay.
And then we'll have the final public hearing then. We have two more meetings to work on land use. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you for consideration. Thank you.
And then we have two more meetings that we could discuss land use ordinances.
Yeah, I'm looking at stuff like accessory dwelling units. So that's in law apartments, again, simplifying that. We, amongst us, I think we have a handful of things.
We're not making change just to make change, are we?
No, so what we're doing is actually we've, we've been taking the phone calls we're getting and the people that come into our office.
Yep.
And we've been mental noting the things that don't make sense in the land use ordinance that we need to get clarification on. And that's why we're trying to clarify.
Wait a second.
And things that don't make sense.
You're, you're listening to people who come and knock on the door and trying to, wow.
Listen, don't tell people we listen. We don't. Nothing's going to happen. But anyway, so that's where the, the changes are coming. There's a couple of things that are very unclear that we've had to reach out in the past. And even so, when we get asked the question again, we're still sometimes unclear. So that's where we're going with it.
And there's a lot of redundancy in there too. I mean, you did, you guys done a good, did a good job of getting rid of a lot of that redundancy in there, things that just, you know. But, no, that's the way to do it.
Yeah.
See, town of, the town of Berwick government listens.
Tell everyone.
And once our comp plan, I guess we go down, this is informational items.
Would you like me to go to informational items?
We have another public comment that we.
I know, we have that. We're going to, we're not going to act on this old business here this evening because the applicant did not come here for Alpine Hill Road, so. We will not be acting on that tonight, no action. Another public comment session is open to anybody who'd like to come forward and talk about anything that relates to the planning board. Just be advised, if you are going to talk about any pending applications and the applicant is not here, we can't answer any questions or, or talk about it. So. Public comment session is open. Going once, going twice. We'll close the public comment session. Informational items, Mr. James.
So we're doing our comprehensive plan. Members of the public are welcome to come or if you want to be part of it, shoot me an email at planning@berwickmain.org. But just follow up on the land use ordinance stuff. It's our intention, the planning department, to, once we have our comp plan, comprehensive plan, which could take, it's about a two year, two to three year long process to completely rewrite our, our land use ordinance. Keep the processes that work well, but in terms of every single page and every single word, look at it and go, does this meet our comprehensive plan of 2022?
Okay.
All right. We have 400 responses to our survey and, which, our survey was a little different from the downtown vision plan survey. We had a lot more open-ended questions. So I started going through that this weekend. And we're going to start sifting through all the comments. As we said, everything, everything's read and start compiling themes. And the comp plan committee will start breaking stuff down. And the next comp plan meeting is January 9th. And that's actually centered around transportation. So the safety on Route four will certainly be a segment of that, of the plan.
Has your committee grown? You had 10 to start with? How many are you up to now?
It's, it's, it's growing. I think with any, probably, there hasn't been new appointments, but we're kind of getting to that point where, reached out to the library and the school board to try to get a, and there's a school board member that has indicated they're interested in, in participating. We have a rolling offer to like the fire department, if they have a, a rep that wants this to be there, sewer, police, same thing. And I try to tie in public works as, as much as possible, just so we're on, all on the same page. So it's probably, probably get up to like 12, 13, but with a 13 member committee, you got seven will show up. And then you'll have a completely different six that'll show up. And I think that's, that's how envision Berwick worked for a while. And I think it's a good way to, if it's a two and a half year long process, not to burn anybody out. So period on that. Steve and I met with Great Falls Construction today. It was a great meeting, just to go over the preliminary TIF and credit enhancement stuff and to really get a, get an idea on timeline. They are looking, they're, for the first time next week, they said they're looking to take a deep dive into Berwick, which kind of means they're really going to start moving the needle pretty soon. They recently opened their Station Square project six weeks ago, so I imagine they're busy with that. Plus, they're doing like, I think some highway projects and they do public works facilities. And they manage, I think, 15 of their own properties. They've got all kinds of properties, but they, they said they're really excited to turn their attention to Berwick. And this is where the fun stuff for them really starts. And let's just say, when it comes to the amount of investment that's going to be going downtown, the estimate that I give, that I thought was pretty optimistic, was maybe over the course of 15 years, you could see 10 to 15 million dollars of investment. The, the number is, I think, higher and quicker. So that was really exciting to, to hear. I don't know if I, I mentioned this, I might have already mentioned this, but they're looking to have a concepts by April. And they already have listening sessions scheduled for February, April, and June.
They're posted now? Have you posted them yet?
I can post them. I can put them on the website the next week or so. We were just kind of holding off to make a Facebook event, but we can, we can, they're already reserved from, it'll be in the town hall auditorium. Or if it's a smaller attendance, it might be here, just depending on.
Just a point, when Kevin Gray and I went up and met with them, we went up and saw that Station Square and walked through it. We did emphasize to them that the bigger picture includes the periphery. So someone like Mr. Cotton and anybody that's on the periphery there, in that longer range timeline of five to 10 years, there may be opportunities because they're, they're going to make a significant investment in our downtown. And a lot easier just to keep growing it if, if, if everything lines itself up, so.
And they're, they're contacting information in the town hall. So they'd be interested in, in speaking with you.
Who would that be now?
It's Great Falls Construction.
Okay, the ones that join the.
Yeah, and you, you may want to come to the next listening session because they are very informative.
When, when is that? February 6th?
What was the date on that, Jay?
It's a, I, I don't recall off the top of my head, but I can reach out. I can get it to you one way or the other. it to you one way or the other.
Anybody else? Any informational items? Anybody else?
The only thing I had is I was hoping the applicant would have been here tonight, cause I've gone through a series of questions. And a lot of it is because I'm trying to catch up to this thing because it has a long history. I think we are kinda starting over again because it sat idle for a while. So if you don't mind, I'll comment, I'll put all my comments down on a piece of paper, share them with you and Lee J and James, and then that way they, you guys would at least have an understanding of where I'm thinking or what I'm.
Maybe you could give him a head start then too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On answering these questions.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I remember when the first cluster went through, cause this is a cluster development.
Yes.
And when the first one came through, it was, you know, it, it's a process and I'm going down through and I'm trying to figure out whether or not that whole process has been checked off. Did we do this? Did we do that? It's pretty, it's pretty defined in the ordinance as to what's required. So that's where my questions are coming from. So I'll run those by Lee J and James and CCU.
Yeah.
Yeah, Concert Promoter has one, uh, announcement. September 12th, mark your, your calendar as 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. We're having a pretty, uh, local prominent country rock band, um, pretty much booked for September 12th. And, um, August 1st, as I like, kind of getting there with.
It's Marty England's band.
I wish, no, it's not, but they are awesome. They are.
Revivalists.
Reconstruct.
Reconstructions, yeah. Um, how about, how about the Fourth, Berwick 4th of July fireworks? How are we doing on that?
We have raised $0 for it so far, so it's the first I've heard of it, but.
Start passing the boot at corner point.
Get some sponsors.
Do you have a spare one of these binders kicking around, or should I just track Paul's down at his house?
We can make you one.
You can print a new one.
Okay. Cause I've been going on, on the website to.
Yeah, we get you one.
Wait, I printed you an ordinance.
Oh, you did?
I printed like nine ordinances.
I got one, I got one.
I don't have one.
I got a duct tape binder.
Anybody else? Okay, next is the adjournment.
I'm having too much fun.
I move that we adjourn the January 2nd planning board meeting.
2000?
2020.
Well, that was a big debate the other morning.
We have a motion on the table here, so we have a second.
I'll second.
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
There is no discussion on adjournment. All in favor?
I'll talk to you afterwards.